This is the Ocean Shores Planning Commission meeting. Also Zoom, we're at the Ocean Shores Library. This meeting is being recorded Tuesday, May 10th, 2022 at 2:00 PM. Some rule called two is, yeah, there is E's. Brian Bachman, here. Gordon Morris, here.
Eleanor Doran.
Yeah.
Richard Wills, here. And Pat Brunstein is, is ill, so do I have a motion to excuse Pat.
I'm going to go excuse Pat.
For that question. So. Do I have? A motion to approve? I think it's yet to be approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2022?
I'm going to approve the minutes of, was it 22 April?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So. At this point, we're going to approve the minutes.
Twenty, twenty-two April. Oh. I don't remember the date before that. I can look it up.
The two weeks before that?
I don't know. Because we're, don't, don't, are we approving both of those sets of minutes?
Because the minutes weren't done last time.
Right.
We did two last meetings.
We did two. Oh, you did two last.
We're still on the 22nd. Okay, at this point, we're going to leave the regular meeting to go to public hearing. Marshall?
Okay, thank you, members of the planning commission. The public hearing that we're going to hear today is for the rezone of a, a B1 property to B2 general commercial. The property is located down at eight, or excuse me, 984 Thayer Court Southeast in the city of Ocean Shores. So this application was turned in last year with a, with an owner and a representative. Dean Benjamin is the new owner. Anderson was the name of the first owner, and he has since relinquished his interest in the property to Dean Benjamin. The project location, as I said, is at 984 Thayer Court Southeast in Ocean Shores. That's Division 15, Lot 32 of Ocean Shores, Platte Volume, Page 142, situated in Ocean Shores of Grace Harbor County. The current zoning designation is B1 retail commercial. We turned in a CIPA, or a CIPA checklist was turned in and distributed to the agencies on 4/26 of 2022. And to date, we have no negative comments coming back from the agencies. Public notice was sent out on or before 4/27 of 2022 to owner, property owners within 300 feet of this proposed rezone. And at least 10 days prior to the hearing, legal notice was published in the Albany Daily World. That took place on 4/30 of 2022 and again on 5/3 of 2022. All notices are in conformance with Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 1751040 and 1751050. No written comments were received as of the date of the hearing. Recommendation from the staff, planning department to the commission would be that you approve the proposed rezone. Property information. The property is located in the southeast quadrant of Ocean Shores. The landscape is primarily plapped with shrub brush and no major trees. The current land is vacant with no major improvements. The area is currently zoned B1 and B2 commercial with other landowners using their parcels for similar use. The project description, the applicant proposes to rezone the subject properties from a B1 to a B2. Again, CIPA checklist was submitted on 4/26. And on 4/26, the same day, the checklist was sent out with a determination of non-significance to the Washington State Department of Ecology, CIPA Registry, the Washington State Department of Ecology, CIPA Unit, the Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, Grace Harbor Council of Governments, Department of Natural Resources, Washington Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, Washington State Parks, and the City of Ocean Shores Engineering and Public Works Department. To date, no comments regarding the environmental determination have been received as of today. The proposal requires review and approval of the following permit applications. They have applied for a zoning, a change of zoning. They applied for a CIPA. A determination of non-significance was issued, and the review authority for this application is before the planning commission. You guys will provide the first review, and if you approve the zoning. The zoning application, then it will be forwarded from the planning commission to the council for final action and approval. Currently, the site is vacant land. The surrounding or adjacent zone classifications to the north, there's B1 retail commercial and B2 general commercial. To the south of this property is B2 general commercial. East, B2 general commercial. West is B1 retail commercial and B2 general commercial. The comprehensive land use designation, and for those of you that don't get into the comp plan very much, the general commercial is the equivalent of a B1 retail commercial and, excuse me, general commercial is equivalent to B2 general commercial. And retail commercial is the equivalent of our B1 retail commercial. So the comp plan's land use designation of the property surrounding to the north, general and retail commercial; to the south, general commercial; to the east, general commercial; and to the west, general and retail commercial. Existing land uses to the north, storage and vacant; to the south, is owned by Mr. Benjamin and being used as a commercial stockpile. East is vacant land and west is a commercial stockpile. Applicable regulations and staff analysis, the applicable regulations come from Title 17 zoning, the Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Chapter 17 dot 51 zoning amendments. The conclusion, staff concludes that this, through the findings of fact, proposed rezone and future development will meet the goals and policies of the comp plan, city zoning codes, and city ordinances pertaining to this request. Pursuant to land use industrial goals and policies, 3.3 of the 2020 comp plan, land use goal number four is to support emerging economic development opportunities and new jobs by providing for light industrial and business parks. Staff finds that rezoning the properties and adding them to the commercial properties inventory will provide additional commercial opportunities near the south business district. If this property is rezoned and complies with the conditions set forth in the report, it will not be detrimental to the current uses and planned future uses in the immediate neighborhood. Pursuant to Title 17 dot 52 dot 050, staff finds that approval of the rezone will be substantially consistent with the applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and will not adversely affect other uses of properties in the immediate vicinity. Granting the rezone does not reduce the dimensional requirements of the district, nor does it provide for nuisance to life, limb, or property, and it will not develop through this proposed rezone. Pursuant to the preservation of public health, safety, and welfare, staff finds that the proposal preserves the public health and safety and welfare if the recommended conditions are adopted as a part of the decision. The recommendation, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezone, changing the zone from a B1 retail commercial to a B2 general commercial, subject to the following conditions. The proposed rezone must be approved by the planning commission and city council. All future building plans and site design must meet the following: current international fire code, current international building code, the City of Ocean Shores Municipal Code, Ocean Shores Municipal Code Title 17, as well as all other applicable federal, state, and local laws. Item number three is any future construction in the city right of way must be approved by the Public Works Department in compliance with street standards in effect at the time of construction. All utility construction must comply with the City of Ocean Shores code standards. The applicant must comply with all City of Ocean Shores inspection requirements. And that concludes the staff report. It was dated 5/5 of 2022.
I went down and looked at that property, got out of the car, walked around. I can see no problem with granting this change at all.
So before you go around, we need to take public testimony.
Okay.
Are you taking testimony?
Yes. Don Williams?
Oh, yeah, this is Don Williams. I, um, I just, uh, I, I don't know the, the Mr. Benjamin, who he is, but I've looked at the, I just looked at the maps from the county. And it looks to me as though he also owns the lot to the left of, if you stand at the end of Thayer Court, looking at his property on the right. The one to the left, number 981, is also owned by him, and I believe the one farther south on Beaver Court is also. So maybe you could confirm that. There's three parcels in a row that is owned by the same person. And, and I, and I believe the, the two other lots are already B2. So I'm just kind of wondering how this one ended up being the odd, the odd one being B1, but I would certainly support changing it to B2. And I, and I, as I understand it, in all three of his lots, two of which are on Thayer Court and one is on the next court called Beaver Court, will all be then B2. Is that, is that correct? I'd like to have a comment, but besides that, I would support the change. Thank you.
Your description of the properties and the ownerships adjacent to the proposal are correct on, thank you.
Anybody else? That concludes the public.
Are you going to go around, and is there any approval that you'll do?
So I fully support the change. It just makes sense that all three of the convention's properties be zoned the same. So I fully support. And waiting on anybody else to make their comments. I would take the motion that we approve.
Just wait until we.
I got one, yeah. Play out, or I, well, I got my watch around. Very consistent with the use. You know, we need more, we need enough B2 to sustain land industry and this sort of stuff to get it, and it's the perfect location set back behind the story here, and it's, you know, perfect for what the intended, both the comp plan and the current zoning are. I strongly support the B2 rezone.
Gordon, any comment?
What's the status of the alley between the properties there?
So, uh, that's a public right of way. Similar to some of the other utility easements, we do have a vacuum sewer line that runs through that area. And Mr. Benjamin has proposed getting an easement from the city so that he can access back and forth across that and will make any necessary improvements to the right of way to be able to do that without potentially damaging the sewer utility.
And, uh. My regulation is the only significant difference between B1 and B2 is outdoor storage. Is that right?
Basically, yeah.
There's, there's one other, I don't remember which is which, but in B1 or B2, that you have to have a designated area filled out for, for like retail or, um, uh, do I make you sense, Marshall?
Yeah, you're, you're speaking to, it sounds to me like B1. Um, that's a requirement for B1, but it wouldn't be for B2.
Correct, right, and, and.
And he doesn't need any retail, obviously.
And that's why he wants to change it to B2. I have a friend who built a garage over here on Point Brown, and he didn't realize that it was B1, and he was forced to build a little room, it was a big three-car garage, because it wasn't B1.
He needed a primary use.
Right.
To go along with his conditional use.
Exactly, and so, so again, the whole thing makes perfect sense to me.
Ryan, anything else? No, I know, I, it's surrounded by B2, it totally makes sense. Okay, I fully support it also.
So then you close out the public hearing, and then you take.
Okay, at this time, we're going to close out the public hearing. It's a process of a 212 and return to our regular meeting.
So now, does the planning commission now need to make a motion to approve?
Correct.
This change? So I make a motion that we approve the change of the property from B1 to B2.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
So. Good job, Marshall. It was a long read.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of information that goes into, bearing out whether it's an appropriate requested.
Marshall, I got a question.
Sure.
I got a bunch of transient rental stuff mixed in with this proposal. Is that just a mistake?
It's all part of our agenda.
That's coming up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they got me with it too. I'm thinking, I didn't put that in there, did I?
My good intentions are entirely.
Well, it's be good, yes.
Okay, now we need to go to public comments for the general meeting. Do I have any public comments for the general meeting?
Don Williams, do you have a public comment?
Were you asking me something?
Have a public comment for the regular meeting?
Uh, no, thank you. I was just watching. Thanks.
Anybody else have public comments? That being said, we're on the transient rentals and we'll turn it over to Gary. Now, there is some confusion, and I had confusion as well, so we're oriented towards in the, in the package. Starting on page 38 is the initial draft that we're going to consider going under. That goes to page 38, 39, and page 40. Without an effect is this sort of an amalgamation of transient rental code from many, many different cities and the work you guys did back in 2018. Starting on page 41 is the work you did in 2018. That goes 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46. Page 47 is a 2017 article, which both started on iCloud, and is probably the most covered thing that you can find in municipal code writing. That's, that's relevant. And last week's meeting confusion started on page 51. That's actually the current code for the city of, gosh, Clyde Hill. That's the current code for the city of Clyde Hill, of Clyde Hill, starting on page 51. So I pulled some provisions out of here and we're going to make a more current. Starting on page 57 is the current code for San Juan, which really wasn't as relative in my view, but there was a couple ideas I pulled out. And starting on page 60, to the back of the packet, is Westport, which had a couple of good things in there too, because. So those are the four sources we kind of used to put together a, a possible draft code back to page 38. I really looked hard at the 2018 document you guys did. Well, this will get to the first issue, I think, that we want to discuss before we get word. The 2018 work you did had the owner, operator of the transient rental go into the planning commission and getting a transient rental permit. So we were developing a special permit and doing all that sort of thing. Two of the other three cities also appear to issue a transient rental permit. But in those cities, it's transient rentals in the middle of the residential, so it's sort of a little more, um, obtrusive activity. What we had discussed last week, when I went with, rather than putting the burden of a permit, a new permit on sub-office, because this is going to be so limited, it's only going to be in B1, B2, because not a lot of transient rentals going to be going on in this town, that perhaps we just try to make the business license conditional on those things you would need. Then renewal of the annual business license for the transient rental, take the place of a special transient rental permit that now, Marshall, was some other department has to manage. Any thoughts on that concept before we sort of, I sort of go on?
So I have, I have two, two points I want to make. And number one, I absolutely agree with you about the business licenses. Make it simple, make it easy. And the other comment I would make is what you just read about how, how this draft document is separated, that I think it would be useful if there was a covered letter between each of those cities. So it specifically says that these pages, block, block, and block, block are Clyde Hill, these pages are San Juan, these pages are, because as I read through this packet before the last meeting, especially in the Clyde Hill, I said, is this Ocean Shores code? It took me a while to figure that out, as you just said. So either we label it the top of the page, or put ahead of each of those pages, Clyde Hill municipal code, San Juan municipal code, or put a, uh, uh, put on, I say, a page that says how far the pages are.
I'm not sure we need to follow the city codes and city. I will send them.
We're, we're going to send this back to the mayor, and I think the only thing we're going to do, send to him, is our draft.
That's one of the things.
Period.
With the description of, this is based on a review of multiple other city codes and the work we did in 2018. So I think rather than confuse everybody, we'll just send him the work on.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they don't need to know where, but they, we can say we got it, like Eric said, we got it for different municipalities, but if somebody's really interested, tell them.
Then I would suggest that, that in our letter to the mayor, that we say that we looked at these other resources, Clyde Hill, San Juan, Westport, and, and.
Well, it's off public records.
Yes, but when they're sitting there at the city council, they're not looking at public records.
Yeah.
And it just supports that we didn't just pull this out of, out of the air, out of our hand, that we actually give some serious work in consideration. And these are the sources that we looked at, and it just makes it cleaner, I think.
I can, I can do that with the cover.
Yeah.
Perfect. But, I mean, so is there anybody else that objects to making business licenses contingent on meeting it, or would prefer to see, I guess, a specific license for any friend?
I don't see any problem with, with the business licenses covering it. One thing I would like to suggest to the mayor in the cover letter, that he writes some type of letter to the community explaining what these rentals are and are not, because I happened to see this on Facebook the other day that just kind of ties into this. We'll be renting my RV this summer, starting in June. If you have a family coming out, I'll gladly help with a discount rate. Four beds up front, queen in the rear, suite's tent, located in Ocean Shores Boulevard next to Ken Peterson Park. This person also offered to put a, um, a mobile home on your property for you to rent out also. So I think we need to give some clarification to the community of what does and does not constitute a legal overnight rental. I think it could be helpful, because what could happen is someone pays for a month's rental for a vacation, and they move into the trailer, then code enforcement comes along and, um, you know, it could create a problem. I think some clarification is all.
I don't necessarily disagree with you, but it says right in here, B1 and B2. Oh, it doesn't say that, or it says it's not in, right? But we don't ever say what's interesting is our code only to pretend we don't, which is funny. Our one, it's, it's exclusionary.
Yes, exclusionary.
I did not see any way, even though I looked, that you can rent out your mobile home on your vacation lot, but I would assume that that's not kosher, no matter what zone it is.
The, the regulations for mobile home are very, very specific. And so if you're trying to bring it up, it would seem to me that, that the 120-day, um,
well, you have two things. It's really, it's a while, but I never thought of it. Transient rental is less than 30 days.
Right.
So if you rented your camper out for more than 30 days on a legal camping lot, wow, that would be something that I would have to ask somebody else. I'm not starting to figure out if that's legal.
Well, it says in the code that I can allow you to camp on my property with written permission. It does not address renting it.
Okay.
Which I think maybe it should address.
And if you're renting it, now you're a motel, then, then whatever the, the municipal code, power of the municipal code deals with motel, again, it has to be a B1 or a B2, I would think.
And I'm sure they don't have a business license.
Right.
That the, the business license would be my concern. If, if they're renting it for over 30 days, then, then they fall into that. In, in the utility code, it's broken down into type one or type two. One is less than 30 days, which is the transient rental or hotel motel variety. And then, and then the other, I, I can't remember which is type one or which is type two, but the other one is for over 30 days. And, and it, and, and I'm kind of along the same camp is, can you rent your home out for more than 30 days without a business license within the city? Right? I think, I think I have to look at that in code to get that as code.
Well, the code states that you can give permission for a friend or relative.
Yeah, for an RV space.
But it does not say you can rent it, nor does it say you can't. So I think we should address it, because it could be a problem.
I got to pull this back a little bit, because our specific task was, are, is the current code for nightly, current nightly rentals adequate, or do we need to expand? And that's, that's our task. And if, if we're given the task, given the other stuff, that's fine, but, and, and he was, the mayor was very specific, don't, just stay in the box. This is our box.
Okay. As it pertains to what Eleanor brought up, is, does our nightly rental code need to include some provisions that would prohibit nightly rental of an RV? I probably just answered my own question, because there's no camping allowed in B1 or B2. So there shouldn't be a, there shouldn't be an RV there to begin with.
Right, so anywhere you can legally, anywhere you can legally do transient rental, you can't put a camper. You know, it says that.
Yep, that's what I mean. I, I, I think I just answered my own question.
So that's dumb.
And addressed my own concern, which, which you brought to.
Well, we can go back, once we get this task done for the B1 and B2s, we can go back to the mayor and say, we, we, we've got some issues that we think need to be addressed. Can we work on? So those collateral issues that I rose and proved to him. But we do have a burning need, not a burning need, the mayor didn't ask the question, because he didn't know. The answer is, we have, as a, most cities, grossly inadequate transient rental code, because we didn't have transient rentals. We had very few of them, those are grandfathered in the old code, but now there's a booming business of building properties for transient rentals. So before all these come online, you should get some transient rental code. That meets the objection we wanted.
Can I ask a quick question? I did not think to look at this. What is the zoning you know, on hand, on Ocean Shores Boulevard next to Ken Peterson Park?
That's our one.
That's what I thought.
So somebody's trying to rent out a trailer on a camping lot.
Right, that would be a code violation. And I get, I, I have people call me or, or email me on a fairly regular basis that they see something similar to what you're seeing, and, and I forward those to the code enforcement officer to follow up. So he'll make contact with an individual like that and say, hey, listen, you're advertising for something that would be illegal in the City of Ocean Shores based on current code.
I did do that, and, um. This is typical Facebook. My house was removed because there's a shortage of rentals in Ocean Shores.
Oh, no. Okay.
So, so I, I think that everything that Eleanor just said is pertinent, but not to the task at hand, and, and just.
But it's an opportunity to say, maybe we need to.
And I agree with Dan.
I agree with that 100%.
That, that we need to come back and address that. And just as a point of information, I went over the weekend and I looked up Airbnb, and Airbnb does not publish a list of the addresses. If you want the address, you've got to sign a rental agreement. And in my mind, Airbnb is, is supporting the opportunity of illegal overnight rentals, but I'm all trapped. Let's get back on track. And to get back on track, I think that, that the way that Gary has proposed this, he's done a really good job. I see just one misprint that I would like to bring to everybody's attention.
What? Can we, can we go through the thing in order?
Okay.
Perfect. You might take a strip. Sure, yeah. So again, the very first item on page 38 is the current definition of transient rental, which is 30 days or less. 1705055, for heritage transient rental in all residential zones. For heritage transit rental in all residential zones, it effectively restricting it. So it specifies a penalty, a hundred and fifty dollars a day. That you're caught. So my proposal would be, we don't rewrite anything standing in seventeen oh five point zero five five. It ends in D and then I sort of pick up an E. Um, E one through five really talks about, um, permits and taxes. And I use the term owner operator because, you know, once you get your license, you're operating a business. So I specifically chose the tone, the term owner operator. Um, first one, basically have to get a business license before operating said property as a transient rental. The second one, it's, you know, it sounds silly to say it's permitted to all sections of the code, but I basically wanted to say that, um, special note, because one of the other codes do this, that the behavior enacted by the person renting or otherwise occupying transit rentals, that is in violation of provision, the OSHU municipal code may result in revocation of the business license. So you can't say, hey, it was my tenants. You can't take my license away. And that was in sort of somewhere San Juan or somebody had that, so. You need to basically let the owner operator know that the action of his tenants come back to him. Um, the other thing I thought was cool in the code, it's a discussion of branch locations in the, in the Ocean Shore Municipal Code. So if you have multiple transit rentals, you've got to get a license for each one. Because as I read the code, each one would be a branch.
Mm-hmm.
So multiple business licenses. So you went down and bought a bunch of properties, you've got to get multiple licenses. Um, goes without saying, but I say you must pay all business occupation taxes. And then you must pay the Washington State Department of Revenue and Logic Tax. You could say you're repulsive for all taxes, but I figured you'd call it out because we don't know. There may be people buying these houses thinking they're gonna rent them out themselves and not use a management company or something like that. So I didn't think I heard to call out, so it's fine. Um, here's my guide, uh, insurance. I, I know when we had rental, we had to get special insurance when we were doing long-term rentals. And I believe this is a special service for transit rentals.
There is, yeah, I can speak on that. So there are, uh, special policies. For instance, Formos, which is owned by farmers, writes a vacation rental secondary home policy. It's intended that you're gonna use it as, you might use it for yourself or you're gonna use it for short-term rentals. Exactly the policy type, for the sake of it. Other than that, other people will also buy commercial policies.
Yeah, you could do the same thing if you want, you know, a liability or a million dollars, two million dollars sort of thing on top of that. Whatever the call. So basically, um, there we go. So, and every time you renew, you need to produce your certification insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, next, I started really pulling hard from other cities. Um, the twenty eighteen draft mandated a professional management, a property manager, which you guys did in twenty eighteen. Um, Westport, San Juan, and the other municipalities basically have what they call a local property representative. When the owner operator doesn't live within fifty miles full-time, then you must designate a local property representative. Is there any discussion about mandating a property management company other than the owner? Personally, I like that. But it's, it's honor stuff. My concern is you got people out there now buying property and owning property thinking they're gonna manage it themselves. Well, and if they live within fifty miles, they can.
Okay.
And if they don't, they can't.
Okay.
I, 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 I really appreciate the depth of thought that you put in to creating that paragraph because I think it covers the bases nicely. It, it gives me, the next door neighbor, somebody specifically that I can contact for this problem. And I know that I'm going to get a response because that person is within driving distance, doesn't live in New York. And then our, then there's this alternate property representative. Um, so that is something that no other city had and that I came up with is that other cities have, you know, the owner of a local property representative. My thought was if something happens, you can't get a hold of them, what next? No, again, I, I, I think that it's great that the, uh, that I have, I, the next door neighbor, I have three places I can go. And so if the first two places are out of town or to the concert, the chances of all three of them being out of town are pretty slim, so I can finally get some resolution. I like it the way that you've done it. So, so that's the difference is primary is either the owner operator, or if he lives more than fifty miles away, or chooses to, designates a local property representative. He also has to designate an alternate. And realize that we're not talking Westport, San Juan, where there is, in the middle of residential areas. So where these transit rentals are gonna happen are around other transit rentals. It's not, I guess there are people who have bought in a B1, B2 in a building, non-transit rental residences. So you've got to solve that. But the point is, is you bought in a commercial district. So you're, you saw, the onus is on you to understand you took some risks for having transit rentals. They're still, I, I moved next to the airport. I expect airport noise. We're sort of there. The third one I left in bold and italics because people say, you know, leave the name address for the planning department, leave the name and address of these representatives. I said, police department, kept on file by the city. I'm not sure what to do with that. What do we do with these names? Who should have?
I, I think that this part is a good idea. I mean, that's your first defense.
Do we need to run that by the chief before we?
Probably.
It's, it's, they're gonna result in code enforcement issues.
That's what my point, so.
And I think that they would probably, yeah, they would probably establish it the same way that they do for the camping permit. They have a list, they can.
Exactly. I mean, I didn't think it was especially, if he wasn't already, if she wasn't already doing the camping, I'd feel bad. We've already got her doing code enforcement and camping, so.
I think they just create a sheet.
Exactly. Just like they do for camping. I don't see this particularly.
On your tier, expecting the same conditions would apply to long-term rentals?
No, it's a total different world. Transit rentals, thirty days versus long-term rentals.
I realize the terms are a little bit different, but my experience is that long-term rentals are a bigger pan in the ass than.
That's not what we're asked to advise here.
Cause more damage and create more.
Well, hell yes. I own rental properties, but that, it's a different world. Short-term rentals actually are better than long-term rentals. The perfect is driving yours.
There are a number of companies that offer, uh, which might call rental management from afar. In other words, you can open your door remotely and give out key codes remotely and all this other kind of stuff without being within fifty miles. I think VRBO is one. Oh, there's some other ones too. McCaslin.
Well, it's the same code.
They have local made service, let's say. Where the made service qualifies as a local representative.
It's basically somebody that wants to take responsibility for responding to issues. Not the generic.
Kind of has a main service, want to respond to issues.
Which if you take into account like, um, uh, at the beach rentals, that's a lot of what they do is they just provide the cleaning services for VRBO and Airbnb and stuff like that. So I think that would fall in line with, I mean, I'm guessing that that might fall in line with the local representative.
We're describing here some, uh, sanctions for people who's against business licenses for landlords who for houses whose, uh, whose residents, let's say, violate the municipal code. Do we have the same kind of sanctions for business owners whose employees or owners violate the municipal code as well? In other words, if I rob a store, can I get the business license suspended? On that basis? We're saying the same thing here for people that might make noise. We don't have any standards here for this mic.
I don't know. Is that something that would happen during the overview of the code?
Probably.
That would look at that.
There's a couple things that I think will be reviewed.
Also, several things that we, uh, wrote them deliberately up to as a vague, hoping the lawyer would make them clear in some cases. Uh, you know, I, I use like, I use terms like reasonable time. I was about to say, what's a reasonable time? Once that he said one, I'm like, I'm like, you know, that's, that's hard to say. An hour is reasonable depending on what's going on. And, you know, what's the issue that's causing a property already a note? So, um, so do I need to go over the police shape for this before it goes forward or can we send it up?
Well, what will happen is, you know, go to the mayor and the mayor will send it to the department that it impacts.
Okay, good. So, and the second one right below is a fire safety inspection, so.
And that's done as part of the business license anyway.
It is part, but I think calling it out doesn't hurt and making it annual doesn't hurt. It's just to get somebody in the property and our fire department affects them. And they'll come change a light bulb for you. Ask them to, and they have time. So, um, I mean, this is ideally what they should do. Fire safety, they're really good at that. We all see things that are kosher. All right. Now, I didn't get into back occupancy. One city tried to say two people per bedroom plus four. I didn't want to get that specific. So I saw them just said whatever the building code says. What somebody else is gonna have to determine. I, again, I think the way you worded that is great. And this is the one, uh, typo that I see. Next to the bottom line, it says ensuring that the transit rental property is in, operated in. That first in, I think, you believe it. Got it. Thank you. A hard game. Um, I'm sure you might want to help with this. At least one additional observation. This is very common, transit lodging use. Um, then I threw one in there. It says sufficient parking space under the ride and such that on-street parking is not required at the maximum occupancy. Because a lot of these are right on playground. You don't want people parking on playground.
Right.
Um, and, and on Olympus. You know, some of the courts, it's okay.
And it's kind of odd because we treat transient rentals like a hotel or a motel, which is, uh, which is one space per unit.
Right.
Um, but they do, they do talk about, you know, when you have multiple bedrooms and stuff like that, you get into one and a half spaces for the multi-family. And when you start getting into multi-bedroom, single-family residences, then they start adding the parking places up. I think, um, you know, there, there, there might be, you know, good cause for having some language that would, that would add to the parking regulations for transient rentals. At least on the size, a lot of these are small, you know, one, one or two bedroom. Uh, we're gonna have some stuff like that. I've got some proposals, uh, on the table for, for smar, fairly small units. Um.
Yeah. So, you know, basically I have two, two lines. One is that sufficient parking space provided such that on-street parking is not required at the maximum occupancy. That lets the police come by and say you're violating the code because you're parked on the street. Then the second one is no more than four vehicles, which is the standard nuisance come in Ocean Shores. So basically tries, uh, if you have a transit rental, four vehicles outside, whatever you can fit in the garage, and that's probably about all you should have at your transit rental. So then I, I have a, sorry, a point or verification. Uh, if, if I park, if I'm in a transit rental and I park on, on the median, I park on the, the, the shoulder, uh, is that on or off-street parking? Off-street?
Off-street. In my opinion, if you're on the street. If it's not on the private property, then it's considered on-street.
Okay.
In the right of way.
And, yeah, exactly. So, so the drainage ditch is in the right of way.
Yeah.
So that would qualify as on-street parking.
Right.
And, and again, I think, I think Gary, that you did a good job with this. And I, I like that, that, uh, um, you are saying you can only allow occupancy, you have to lift the number of, of vehicles to what you can contain within your property. You said much better than I said.
Yeah, and I would think it would be an issue for most of these. They don't. Um, personally, we, my, my family used to do big Thanksgiving, uh, celebrations down here at the beach. And we would rent a, a nightly rental. Um, one that's probably been disbanded since the code has changed, but there was not near enough parking on there, so we would park vehicles in other areas. Um, and our, and our hosts, um, had some sites that were available to them for overflow parking, and so they made provisions for us to park additional vehicles in another area.
That would be the hope, that somebody would do that. And all this does is get somebody to hope to say, you know, park in the street. Yeah, it goes in the code. You're operating a transit rental, you need to get all your people on your property, you know, by the way, no more than four outside the garage. You know, and then I, I'm thinking, okay, so I'm, I'm in an overnight rental and I have some friends who, who are over in Ocean City or whatever, and they come by to visit, throw in their two or three hours as business are optional to do. And I don't think that this would apply to those who are visiting the actual renters.
I don't agree.
That's up to law enforcement to figure out. Yeah, I, 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 I think you're right there. I mean, it's a reasonableness on the response that shows up. If somebody said, oh, I'm just here for twenty minutes. I want to park in the street. Well, I didn't do what I'm doing at all. And then no cost comes. I don't think. In my experience with law enforcement is, is they are very amenable to reasonable exceptions. So I don't see that as hardship. Okay. Yeah. So we're good with that section? That's the best I can do at this point. Solid waste, I didn't get into bears. I went to it, but I didn't. So were you gonna add a provision for bears or something like that? No, I just basically said, no. Solid waste shall be stored completely enclosed and secured in solid waste. That's the code. One city had this restriction on use, which I thought was really pretty cool. I kind of want to see if people agree with it. I saw this, basically, they list things you can't do. Um, weddings, banquets, receptions, bachelor, bachelor party, concert fundraisers, concert events, or any other similar group activity. Is that kind of what we want here? A prohibition against those type uses?
I don't think it's a bad idea because those are party things.
Yeah. Because. Little party things.
Yeah, yeah.
Did anybody see the girls' home for, for Walmart with hawker over there? Sitting, sitting out in front of a house. They're obviously illegally rented with a sign that says hawker over there. It lasted about thirty minutes.
I, I do notice that we get like during like hardly weekend and stuff like that, we get a lot of, you know, we get a lot of groups of people that have these pieces out. So I think it's good to have something in the code that can address that.
Yeah. And again, it's another book in my opinion, putting enforcement, enforcement books to say, just keep it down. It looks like you're having a casual party.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not necessarily that they're gonna shut them down, but if it gets out of hand, we've got the teeth to deal with it.
Yeah. I just want to make, I found that in another city code.
So, so I struggle with you guys putting something in code that you don't expect me to enforce.
Well, it's kind of enforced.
I think it would be enforced. I mean, if it's, if it's in the code and it's occurring on my watch, it's enforced. I mean, so.
Well, I'm saying it gives them a funk to go up there and say, listen.
How, how do you know it's a better? Yeah, exactly.
Unless they're making a lot of noise.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
So if they behave themselves, then.
If I'm not allowed the reason to go.
Yeah, you have no reason to go. Unless the guy tells me, you know, gosh, they just got married, you know, we're having a, a reception here. Or it's faintly clear that they've got a preacher and a, and a bride and a groom and a wedding.
So Marshall is, really, a wedding is the one that got me of all of them.
I know. I don't necessarily think that that's a.
Do we want to prohibit these activities? I threw it in there because that's the one other city.
Yeah.
I, I would ask Marshall, how many times are you driving by and see a violation and you respond to it? As opposed to how many times does somebody call you up and say, I think there's a violation, and you respond to it?
It depends on what I'm doing when I drive by, whether I have time to stop and address it or not. I got, I got a hypothetical for you guys. So I am just some guy. I want to rent this vacation rental and bring five or six guys down and play music in the living room. And we're gonna piss off the neighbors.
There's a noise ordinance.
Yeah, there's noise. Yeah, there you go. So, 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 and I'm just saying hypothetically, do we want to address these things? Because there's always, there's, there's other ways to go about it. Well, I can address a lot of these things with a noise.
Yeah, we did. I, I threw that in there just because I saw it somewhere else.
I did too, and I, and out of my eye to say.
Everything that I put in here, this L was the one, I think is the one that is the most unique and the most warranting discussion. So I, I have a suggestion. I, I kind of like it, but I can see the other side. And when this is presented to city council, I think it might be fair to say to city council, we put this in, but we really think there's.
but we really think it's up to you, city council, to decide yea or nay on this paragraph. It's your responsibility anyway, but cross specific attention to it. We should have an opinion.
But first, it's going to be.
Right.
Might end, that might end, you know, by the now.
Right.
And, and, and if it is presented to council, there are a few council members that question everything and everything.
Oh, yeah, so it's kinda going through.
That's what's kinda true. So, but if you don't put it in there, um, they'll never get it.
Uh huh. I'd say put it in and let them throw it out.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying that, that, that maybe it's worth throwing, highlighting.
I wouldn't even highlight it.
Well, it's, you're right. It'll get picked up by a couple of council members, trust me.
So, the overnight cabins that are down by Damon Point, they do all of those things.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't, you're putting in restricted use on properties that are already doing those things.
That's correct, like the.
So they rent out their cabin, they rent out all of them.
Is that a, a college? That's a hotel, it's a hotel.
Oh, okay.
But the other ones, the colleges by the beach, do they do weddings there?
Yeah, and they rent out that little, the little place and you have weddings right there and.
But that's okay to have a wedding inside the, the event building.
You don't. You have it on the beach, right on their property.
The Washington State parks, actually, you can get a permit to have a wedding on the beach if there's more than twenty-five people present. So there's a threshold that when you get to so many people, you have to get a permit from the state parks department.
But that's different to have them in the.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, but if they're staying in the, I'm going along with what she's saying though, that they're staying in the little condos that are, the little cabins that are right next to that spot.
Cause that's what I have to do.
Technically, that is the section. I mean, where else are they gonna go?
They have the one house.
But at the same time, like we said, like we all said, this is something that the council's gonna pick apart. So we might as well just, you know, have a deal with it.
I just, I'm just saying, everything I did, I was, it's comfortable with this.
Marshall, I suspect there's a wedding going on in the street. Can you look into that? I mean, I can have a wedding in my house, but not in my transit rental. Am I here here?
I just, I just threw it in there.
Yeah, that's, well, that's the, that's the, you know, the crux of what I'm hearing. I don't have a problem with throwing it in there and, and letting somebody else pick it apart and toss it out. You know, I like the concept that, that the other, that the other codes already addressed nuisance type activities within the community. We, you know, do we need to?
Do we need to call these out? I was only in one of the other three and I, and I was shopping. I sold this one off the shelf.
I suspect that a lot of these restrictions in these other cities are for transit rentals in residential areas because they seem written specifically.
Oh, they are definitely, yeah.
But now we're applying it to business only areas where you can't, you don't have those same issues. My, my concern about the city is that, uh, they tend to do either all or nothing. And so you give them a proposal and you say, well, put it in there, we'll see if they take it out. What they're likely to do is table the thing, forget about it. If you run, unless you've given something that's ready for them to say, looks okay to me, boss. And then not make any changes. Oh, they're perfectly happy with that. Once it gets to arguing about little stuff like, oh, kinda like we are here. Kiss that or just goodbye.
So if that was the case then, Thorin, why couldn't we just, if we think about it from a nuisance standpoint, does the, the code in other ways enforce these things that we wanna keep out?
Keep it banned.
Right, so we can just hold it active.
I think the nuisance ordinance has to be subjective and.
Right.
Slightly enforced to whoever screams a lot of this, okay? This is fine. I mean, I've got two overnight rentals. Hear a lot of things.
I'm just saying, I agree with some of what you're saying there that, um, these transient rentals, they're all theoretically, they're all surrounded by other transient rentals. And we're asking these people to go out and get business licenses and then we're telling them what they can and can't do with their business.
Well, that's why.
When, when it could be enforced by nuisance laws and codes as well.
Do we get calls of those operating? That's why. I think these are a little oppressive ones.
So, so the other, another way I guess to say it is if, if there's a wedding and it doesn't get out of hand and.
No, no, that's, I don't wanna go there. I mean, here, here's an alternative I could suggest. Is we write the letter to the mayor and say, oh, by the way, the planning commission also considered this provision, but couldn't come to a unanimous decision on whether it should be included or not. I, I don't really be okay with that. Cause I'm torn, I'm, I'm so torn on this one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kinda on the fence about it too. Like, like Danny said, I guess if somebody's having a wedding and it doesn't get out of hand and nobody bothered, what do we care?
That's exactly how I feel.
Just, yeah.
I think if you feel you could handle it more efficiently by relying on the nuisance ordinance and, and that you are actually going to be forced to address some things that don't need to be addressed because they're not being a problem, I'm okay with taking it out and relying on the nuisance ordinance.
So that's, that's a question of the rest of the regulations. Adequately cover the nuisances that may arise from.
And gives you more options.
Well, another problem that we run into and, and, um, and Sean, the code enforcement officer and I run into this is we've got two, two sections of code that are trying to address the same thing. He's got way more latitude than I do to, um, to apply common sense to it and say, well, I don't think they're being a, a problem or that doesn't rise to the level of a citation or something like that. Um, if we write it in another section of code that covers the same type of action that doesn't give us wiggle room or give me wiggle room, then, then I'm obligated to enforce. And he might write, not write the citation, but I could forward it to him from planning and require that he address it from the planning side. That, that's cumbersome. So I would just assume have one set of codes, whether it be the nuisance ordinance or, or whatever we're talking about, environmental, one set of codes that we have to enforce, whether I enforce it or Sean enforces it. So that we don't have these conflicts coming from two separate parts of code.
Makes sense.
Did I throw this hand grenade in there? Okay, I think we should take it out. I'm more angry. I, I'm, I'm okay with striking.
Well, I like to see, I always thought that if we write, if we suggest ordinances and whatever else, that they should be addressing something where you see specifically it'd be a problem or habit. If we don't have a problem solved, let's not try to solve it.
I just, yeah, I, I strike, I'd love to strike it.
But I'm, I'm talking about, honestly, the whole thing. Only, only because the thing about the business licenses pension kinda concerns me because we don't really do that for other types of businesses. Transit rentals don't seem to be particularly egregious, uh, hotbed of law violations as far as I can tell. I, I like the business licenses and I like the business license, uh, partially because it gives law enforcement, uh, a handle when there are illegal transit rentals. Uh, and, and I guarantee there are a number of illegal transit rentals in the city.
It makes people get into the system.
We've got laws about that. I mean, you're.
No, the issue is, we're gonna have all these, we do now have some, or we're gonna have a lot more. Transit rentals, do they need to be regulated and how? Do we need code?
Well, I think they are right now, but, uh, with, with respect to the entire city code, not just one design specifically for that thing.
So we go back to mayor and say, we're good. We don't need anything else. That'd be my suggestion, honestly.
I, I disagree.
Yeah, I disagree too.
I, I, I think. Are we, are we, are we, are we fighting a problem that needs to be solved? I say no, but I'm willing to be.
Well, if we're. Look at it this way, if, if we're outside, you, what you said, um, but we're forced, we've come up with something that if it becomes an issue, we already have something in place.
That's what planning is about. That's why we have.
I just wonder what they are.
And it, it is really nothing, very little new in here. I agree with you, although it's a lot of them referring back to existing codes for taxes, licenses and all that sort of stuff.
But it helps.
It's a reiteration of, somebody says, you know, somebody says, I bought the house just off of Damon Road. It's just got sold, not built yet. I live in Adderley and I wanna roll with it in the transit rental. What do I need to do? Just trying to give it to a life three day.
I think that's probably the most effective part of the policy really. I think it's good to have, because I've gotten calls saying, hey, my TV doesn't work, which is like every damn tenant says that.
Yeah.
But it's other things too, I guess.
The city gets a ton of phone calls about transient rentals. And we don't really have anything of like X, Y.
As far as what's the calls about, what the question is.
In, in courage, you mean, about what I do with?
Yeah.
We, we do have a one-page, um, you know, summary of, of basically how we regulate to the extent that we do nightly rentals in Ocean Shores. And, um, if you guys haven't seen that, I will email it to Dan and we can get that out to the city. So you guys see what we're doing currently or what the, uh, and I, and I guess it's probably more policy than code because it's, some of it's backup in code, you know, as far as where you can do it. We say that you can only do it if you wanted to on the, on the summary, but code doesn't say that.
Code says it on the others, you know, so.
Well, most cities do this under, I guess, a conditional use penalty.
Or structural permit.
Yeah, certainly to the opinions of the neighbors, I, I would imagine. Yeah, we, we don't, because we call them basically tiny hotels. I, I go back and say, I like the way that this is written and I'm okay with the wedding in or out. Uh, I, part of it that says to leave the wedding in is if there's a wedding next door, there's no nuisance. But the nuisance code covers that, uh, and, and so that can be redundant. Uh, but the rest of this, uh, you know, like you're even finished going, but, but, uh, um, I, I like the licensing requirements, uh, because it, 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 it gives law enforcement a hammer uh, that, that they may or may not actually need. It is very clear, uh, so, so.
But it also gives the Orlando.
The Orlando.
What he has to do.
What he has to do, yeah. My, my greatest regret on creating a transit rental and a longer-term rental is that, um, it's, it's really just tells you what you do and need to do. But every time I've done it, you've got a specific permit for that activity. And we're trying to not do that because there's not a lot of them. In Westport, you go to the planning department to get a permit. We don't wanna do that. There's not enough of them to make it work to do that.
If they, uh, if a long-term tenant rented a, rented a house and was doing drug deals there and the authorities learned about it, would they, would they compel the owner of the house not to rent it out anymore?
They could.
How so?
You have certain requirements as the owner of property.
Well, yeah, but I've never heard of a licensing regime where you prohibit people from renting out long-term because of the activity of the residents.
Well, I think with a, when you talk about that, you can talk about abatement. And if you have a renter that's trash at property and we've cited the, the renter, we start citing the owner of the property. We go through to abate on the owner based on their tenants.
That's true. I forgot that. On a, on a used property that made a missed by the renter, then the property owner also.
So I think that that would be, if you would end up, if you would end up doing anything of nuisance, drug dealing, what have you, there would be a certain point when they would go after the owner.
Do we have to sort of timeframe or quality, quantity of that? I don't know.
Well, yeah, I mean, so the last thing I have was the informational act. That's just the greatest hits from whatever way it all sounds. I didn't do a fire emergency exit plan. Most of these are kind of. So I always think there are viewers in hotels, they're even worse.
Exactly.
That a single family home with four individuals. So I mean, that's sort of what I've got to where I'm at.
Oh, that's it? A thankless job.
Well, only because you're a brilliant.
Divorce receptions are worse than wedding receptions.
We get free.
Answer.
No, it's, um, I don't know, you are not, my experience is to get to your other question before we go on this. Cause there is the, really the question of, you know, long-term rentals, what's the requirement for that? I don't know. License or what?
I know, none.
There isn't any.
Not here.
Yeah, so that's how, when I was denied in Portland for ours because of one of the, the deal was considered a separate address. I just rented it all over thirty days to incorporate one there. It was the best of all worlds. Driving horses are the, no way to go.
We're, we're, first, we're not addressing long-term rentals. We're addressing short-term rentals. And, and I think that this, uh, and I'm okay with taking the wedding thing out of there. I'm just really bitter now. And I see good on both sides of that. So I would like to make a motion to approve this as written after striking the redundant in and striking the wedding paragraph, but and.
And then allow you to go to the mayor. Second that.
Any more discussions? All in favor?
Hi.
So moved.
I'll update inside of you.
I have to refuse because I own two rentals.
Okay.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, note yourself as refusing. Well, uh, I'll update inside of you and then you'll be covered for me. And I really think we just send it as it is, not with all the other city codes. If he, if he wants, we can ask them. Yeah, you're all right.
Even if you're a cover letter, you can put the reference of the city code, reference, whatever they were.
So I'll, I'll strike that. And now all the things I put in there, guys, that's the one that I was kind of. That's only one city.
Okay. Okay, so any other discussion? Okay, our next meeting is May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two at two P M. And the note taker we've got from Stan. Have a motion in the jury.
So moved.
For jury.